Three seats are up for grabs for the Office of Hawaiian Affairs in the upcoming general election in November. Voters statewide will be electing a trustee for the Hawaii Island and Molokai seats, as well as one at-large seat. Of the six candidates running, only two are incumbents. Hear from all of them on the issues facing OHA and how they plan to further help the native Hawaiian community. Tonight's live broadcast and livestream of Election 2020 on Insights on PBS Hawaii start now.
Aloha and welcome to Insights on PBS Hawaii. I'm Laura Yamada. The Office of Hawaiian Affairs was established in the 1978 State Constitutional Convention. It's a public trust with a goal of bettering the conditions of the native Hawaiian community. Board members are elected to manage the $600 million trust. Three seats will be filled in the general election, the Hawaii Island and Molokai resident seats, and one at-large seat. Each trustee is elected to serve a four-year term, so we look forward to your participation in tonight's show. You can email, call, or tweet your questions, and you'll find a livestream of this program at PBSHawaii.org and the PBS Hawaii Facebook page. All right, now to the candidates who are appearing via the internet. Luana Alapa is running for the Molokai resident trustee seat. She is a graduate of Kamehameha Schools and the University of Hawaii at Mauna. The former Miss Hawaii has opened her own modeling school and partnered with her sisters to open a clothing store and a production company. Her opponent is Colette Machado, who is the current chair of the OHA board and has represented the islands of Molokai and Lanai since 1996. She was born and raised on Molokai. She is a University of Hawaii Mauna graduate and was an activist in the movement to stop the military bombings of Kaholelave. Our Keone Souza is a candidate for the at-large seat. Born and raised in West Oahu, he's a graduate of Kamehameha Schools. He's a realtor and has also worked as a flight attendant and a stevedor. And he's also a musician with the Grammy-nominated Hawaiian music group Nahoa. And Kaylee Akina is running for reelection for his trustee-at-large seat. He is a graduate of Kamehameha Schools and holds advanced degrees from UH Mauna and Northwestern University. He's president and CEO of the Grassroots Institute of Hawaii, a public policy think tank. All right, Lana Kila Magwell is running for Hawaii Island trustee. After working as an educator at Hawaii Public Schools, he founded the Hawaiian Cultural Center of Hamakua, where he is the executive director and lead instructor. The organization provides cultural education to local schools and communities. His opponent for the Hawaii Island seat is Kiola Lindsay, who was born and raised in Waimea. He graduated from Hawaii Preparatory Academy and earned degrees at the University of Hawaii Mauna, including a master's in public administration. The father of five is currently the advocacy director at OHA. So again, thank you, all of you, for being here, and we're going to go ahead and get right into some of the issues because there's a lot of important things to cover. And so I'll point you out. So Kiola, I'm going to start with you on this one. The question is, there are some unresolved issues with an audit that was ordered by the state legislator. It's holding up millions of dollars in state funding right now. The state auditor wants to review these redacted minutes from the executive session board meetings, but a judge recently, as you may recall, ruled in favor of OHA because of the attorney-client privilege. What is your perspective? Should there be more transparency in this case?
Yeah, you know, again, overall, I believe the trustees have followed the guidance of, you know, their legal counsel and what approach they should take. You know, the auditor wanted more information. I believe OHA has maintained that the work that the auditor has been assigned to do can be done with the information he's been provided already. The matter went to court. The courts decided that certain information that, again, the trustees are deciding not to disclose can be based on, you know, existing laws and policies. But again, I think the main point is that information has been provided, that the auditor needs to fulfill his scope of work, and I'm hopeful that the matter can move forward to resolution. Mahalo.
And Keone, I'm going to turn to you on this one, too, to respond as well, in this situation, if you feel that there should be more transparency or should have been.
Laura, thank you so much. I absolutely agree there should be more transparency. Like Kiola was saying, I totally agree if the trustees and the organization gave the auditor what they needed to move forward, the audit should be completed, and the result of those findings should be acted on. And as trustees, we have a fiduciary responsibility to beneficiaries that we need to follow through on. So we need to make those changes, you know, if there's any negative impact or anything from the findings of the audit. Thank you.
So I'm going to ask one of you, more of you, Luana, this question about the state auditor wanting to review redacted minutes from executive session board meetings, judge ruling that there was attorney-client privilege there. Do you feel that there should have been more transparency or should be?
Well, absolutely. You know, it's important, and this is a state public agency funded by the monies that come into from the trust, and it's a right to the people to know and understand where their monies are going to. So I truly believe that more transparency is important because we want to know what is being spent, what is a part of that belongs to us, why do we have to have these minutes redacted when they should be all about transparency so people can understand where everything lies? Thank you.
All right, thanks, Luana. I'm going to turn to another question now. And Kaylee, I'm going to start with you on this one. This also has to do with an independent financial review ordered by OHA, found nearly $8 million in potential fraud, waste, and abuse. For you, the current trustees, was this audit turned over to law enforcement to see if there were any criminal instances such as fraud? Kaylee?
What we're talking about is an independent audit of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, the first one that ever took place for fraud, waste, and abuse, and I really pushed for this to happen. It took a long time to complete, unfortunately, and I frankly don't believe that enough of the trustees were cooperative with the process to the extent that we needed to be. You asked an interesting question. Was law enforcement brought in? The fact is that the trustees were given a report by the auditors that there were at least 32 areas of serious red flags, indicators of fraud, waste, and abuse, and the trustees, in the majority, did not choose to focus in on any of these instances and hand them specifically over to law enforcement. I happen to have stood up and disagreed with that. I really believe that more has to be done. There has to be not only transparency, but there has to be accountability for things that need to be looked into a little more.
And Colette, I want to turn to you on this one as well, your response.
I supported Kaylee Akina's recommendation for the half a million dollar allocation to create an independent audit. His staff developed the scope of services for this contract. So he went forward with it. We all agreed, and it was a unanimous support that we wanted to be open about what our decision was to move forward with an independent audit. But there was nothing substantial that came out of it that proved that there was wrongdoings, like you said, fraud, waste, and abuse. So I'm thinking the only fraud and waste and abuse was half a million dollars that we spent for this independent audit that trustee Kaylee Akina recommended highly, and we supported it. And his staff was behind the development of the contract scope of services. So to me, I'm thinking, geez, enough has been said. We're a state agency, and we continue to be audited frequently. How often does that occur? You know, we just talked about the reduction of minutes from our executive session. That's the highest levels of privileged information that should be protected for client privileges purposes. So I'm thinking, geez, the auditor got all he wanted. Thousands of reports, thousands of documents were submitted to him, but he felt that he wanted to look at this redacted. So what we submitted to the judge proved that it was client, attorney-client privilege that was not related to what he was supposed to be looking for the investigation. So it's real plain and simple. Maybe the auditor had something looking after OHA unnecessarily, but luckily, the trustees viewed this in a very thorough approach, and we relied on our attorney to make that decision, and we supported him to move forward with that filing.
All right, all right. Thanks, Colette. I'm going to go ahead and move on. And Lana Kila, I want to turn to you on this one. Previous question asking about a financial review, looking at some of the dollars and where they went. To you, Lana Kila, what resolutions have been put in place? Do you feel they need to be put in place to tighten the reins on any kind of questionable spending? Where would you go with that?
Well, I think one thing, when you look at what's happening with this independent audit, I myself, I've always looked at OHA with a serious glass of wanting to see what's happening in there. However, I think there is something that we all need to remember, too, that, you know, who is conducting these investigations is an agencies that benefit when Hawaiians are not united. So I think it is important for us that we do it. If there is any proof of frauds and such, then yes, we must deal with that. But if it is showing and the courts are agreeing that there has been no such indications or proof of fraud or criminal actions, then I think, again, the question bears to be, what necessary then is the red flag? Let's analyze it so that we can properly address it. So who's getting to make the recommendation? One particular thing that I noticed was some things that are considered for us as Kanaka Maoli, perhaps, like the returning of the colony Opuu was something that was kind of flagged. But that's a national treasure for a Kanaka, but for an American lawyer might not have the same perspective. So I think when we're looking at what types of, what we need to put onto the books, what we need to kind of policies like that, we as Kanaka Maoli, we need to set that. We need to be able to analyze, and we set as a Hawaiian organization by Hawaiian cultural values what we deem to be pono and not pono, moving ahead to set proper regulations.
All right, thank you, Lana Kila. I want to ask this question, too, of Keone, about resolutions, actions that have been put in place that you feel should be put in place, if you feel there's a need to tighten the reins on any questionable spending. How would you approach this?
Absolutely. You know, I agree with trustee Machado, which you said, do I think that's a waste of $500,000? Absolutely. OHA is audited regularly, four years. You can correct me if I'm wrong, but every four years. So $500,000 in order to do another audit to get the same findings? Was there anything illegal about this finding, you know, so far in the audit that came with the report? Nothing was illegal. So I know, Laura, you asked earlier, was it presented to the authorities? Was there a case made of the findings? I don't think there was anything illegal in there, you know? So there was no opportunity, I think, to present it to the authorities. But transparency, accountability, you know, fiscal responsibility is all key elements of, you know, what we need to do as trustees and to move forward in supporting our beneficiaries. And we all have to remember, as trustees, no matter who gets into this seat, we have to remember that the beneficiaries are native Hawaiians. And, you know, getting the support of the state of Hawaii as a whole, you know, people ask, non-Hawaians, how do they benefit? You know, we support native Hawaiians. Everyone benefits. We support a native Hawaiian business, increase tax revenues for the state, you know, native Hawaiians into homes off the streets, not accessing public resources, you know, less taxes, you know, it relieves the tax strains on, you know, everyone, every ethnicity, the state of Hawaii as a whole. So I do believe there's transparency, but I do believe that $500,000 was a waste of money.
Laura, do you mind if I clarify something?
Go ahead, Kaylee.
Yeah, I'd like to point out that the $500,000 was absolutely not a waste of money, but a valuable investment. The only reason it might be a waste of money is if the trustees don't act on what was discovered. For example, the very first red flag was some of the trustees were involved in an organization that OHA gave $2.6 million to, and the auditors couldn't find a single receipt or a single invoice. A friend of the CEO was given a $500,000 contract. The auditors could not find a single evidence of any work that was done. And I could go on and on and on. And my point is this, that wasn't a waste of money. It's only a waste of money if the trustees don't act, and we have to be committed to making sure that we look into these things. That's an important thing that needs to be kept in mind.
All right, absolutely, Laura. Can I say one more thing?
Go ahead.
On this issue, before we move on. You know, if we're going to fight for an audit, and your whole campaign is going to be built on audit, OHA, and being the watchdog, and accountability, and all these different things, we definitely, if it was your idea from the beginning, we definitely need to start following through. Because if I'm wrong, but you can clarify this, Kaylee, you did vote not to extend the audit. They needed an extension to complete the report, right? It's on record, and you voted not to complete, not to give them the extension. So if you wanted to follow through and get these findings, why did you vote on not to extend?
Great question. Laura, may I respond?
Please.
I did not vote not to extend. I voted not to delay. We had been in two years of process, and there were ways of being able to complete the audit more quickly. The fact is that the majority of the trustees wanted to delay the audit, and that's what's on the record. I stood up and said, no, it's important to complete this audit because it's being done for the beneficiaries. It's being done for the sake of transparency. That was what took place.
All right, and I need to move on to last one of the other candidates to speak.
Can I comment?
Briefly, please, and then I want to make sure we get to some other questions.
I just wanted to acknowledge that, Kaylee, you tried to find the smoking gun, and there was none. It's on you now. You can blame us for not doing what you wanted, but it's on you now.
We have more time, so we'll get to some other questions. I want to get to Luana to ask a similar question that we asked some of the others. What do you propose? We're talking about monies and how they're being handled. Luana, what do you propose to ensure monies are being spent properly?
Well, first of all, it's always going to come down to the basic needs of the people and the distribution of those monies that will go to the important areas, such as affordable housing for our Hawaiian beneficiaries, job training, those are very important. You know, we're at the bottom of the totem pole on the economic ladder for, you know, not owning their own home, they find themselves in prison. We've had our Hawaiians not able to afford a home for that matter. There are many areas in which our Hawaiian people need to raise the bar, and it's going to have a lot to do with the way in which we look at putting those monies in those specific areas to help them to improve that life that they are so deserving of, and it's all about that quality of life. For me, seeing to that as a trustee, that this will actually happen in their lifetime immediately and denser. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Luana. Let me turn to Lana Kila on this question. Not surprisingly, getting other questions on the TMT, the 30-meter telescope atop Mauna Kea. Do you support the construction of the TMT? Why or why not?
I do not support the construction of the TMT. One of my basis foundations is this is a wahipana. This is a sacred place, and it is sacred to us because of its unique environment. It is a fragile ecosystem, and that's why even in the eyes of the US, this land was set to be conserved. It has always been questioned and challenged, any type of construction and development within these conservation lands. And we have watched over, or from before I was even born, to see the overdevelopment. It has already been proven through previous studies done on the mountain that there has been extreme adverse negative impact to this mountain. And this one more project, which is, again, another one of supposed last projects, is just continuing to degrade that natural ecosystem. So I think a very important thing to note is if you see even as it is, when the Supreme Court granted the continuation of this project, there was the dissent from Justice Wilson, which I very much do agree and stand with. This project would set a precedence of degrading, allowing degradation of wahipana, of conservation lands, which somehow would then open up the ticket.
Now, I do want to let everyone get to this question.
Open up the pathway to say that it is no longer conservation. And so the protection of all conservation lands, this is definitely a pinnacle of that.
Okay, thank you. And to Kiola, I want to ask you that question next. Do you support the construction of the 30-meter telescope atop Mauna Kea? Why or why not?
Sure. So to me, it's a question of what role can OHA play in this issue? And I think the most important role OHA can have is being one of a facilitator and convener of dialogue. The instant OHA chooses one way or the other, we become alienated from that other side. And any involvement that we have is looked through that lens, right? So if we support, the opponents will be suspicious of us. If we oppose, the supporters will be, you know, looking at us like we're not meaningfully engaged. And I think the key is, right, like for OHA's history on any project, one of the key approaches OHA has taken is what does the law require and what does it say? And if it's inadequate when a process comes out in the end, the law needs to be changed. And if additional policies want to get put into place for the management of that area, I think that's wonderful, and it should be done, but those policies have to be clear and guide decision-making for that place. So again, laws can be complemented by policy, but those policies have to be based on something, be applied consistently, and be repeatable. Thank you.
And let Kaylee, thank you, and let Kaylee go ahead. Kaylee, answer that one next.
Sure. Native Hawaiians are diverse. Some of us oppose the 30-meter telescope. Others of us support the 30-meters telescope. The role of OHA would be to bring Hawaiians together and to end the differences that are between them, to bring stakeholders together. And there's a common ground that I'm absolutely committed to. That common ground is the pono stewardship of Mauna Kea. We need to be concerned about the cultural and environmental caretaking of that beautiful mountain. In addition to that, when we have done that, there may be room, I truly believe, for both science and the sacred, for both technology and culture, for both the TMT and for cultural practice. But that can only take place as we care for the Mauna, and that's the common ground we need to build our relationships on.
And Keone, to you.
Glad you asked. Thank you. You know, OHA needs to take more of a stance on this issue, you know? We need to make sure that the board ain't divided on this issue. We're not doing just enough to show our beneficiaries that we're supporting them, you know, by providing trash cans and tents for the Mauna. We need to be clear. I agree with Kiola, like he said, if, you know, I believe in the process. If it's going to go forward, it should go forward, you know, then we need to have a seat at the table from the get-go. We need to have a voice from the beginning. I do not support the current plans of the 30-meter telescope, and I do not believe it should be on the top of Mauna Kea. You know, the mountain has a historical significance to our people, whether the mountain is deemed sacred or not, or whether ancestors would have even condoned the project or not. So I do not agree with the current situation with the 30-meter telescope being built on Mauna Kea. Thank you.
And Colette, to you.
With, excuse me, the way that it is now, there is no room for TMT on the Mauna. I just can't support the TMT being built. But I hear the concerns about jobs and educational opportunities that's been supported by discussion at the board table. We do hear what the needs are, and yet we need to be more open. I agree in the pono approach in protecting the Mauna in perpetuity, as Lana Kila has mentioned. I also believe that we need to be able to reach out and create a new kind of model to reserve and protect the management of the co-management of Mauna Kea. I wanted to recommend in this discussion that the Kaholelave Island Reserve Commission is a joint management between the county, state, protect Kaholelave, Oha, and community organizations, and OHA sits on that commission. The same can happen here for Mauna Kea. Include the University of Hawaii County. Include the Kiai. Include OHA. Include the DLNR. All of those things can make it something more pono than we can ever think of to get it right for this round if we create that kind of o-management for the Mauna.
All right, and to you, Luana.
Well, first of all, the breach of trust is, you know, the continued broken promises by the state and UH, you know, garnered a lot of criticism amongst many people. The inability to store the land is another area in which they failed in that particular area. You know, OHA's role, you know, we can probably put together an area in which OHA can become a co-manager of the Mauna so that they have an oversight of our Hawaiian religious and cultural, the cultural areas and sites up there. We can also be able to protect and honor and reassure Hawaiians that the cultural practices and the beliefs that will continue to flourish there on the Mauna. So at this time, though, it's not conducive to be putting up another structure on the mountain when all of what has not taken place over many years that Kiai have been fighting for and wanting to bring accountability, and the state hasn't done that, OHA should definitely take a role in that. Thank you.
So Laura, is Luana in support of TMT or is she opposed to?
No, yeah, no.
Let's be clear about what you're saying, because it's confusing.
So it's, no, I'm not for the advancement of putting up any other structure, TMT, or any of the, anything of that matter. It's all about taking care of the responsibilities that the state is obligated to do.
All right, let me move on to another question here. We've got quite a few to go. This one is from a caller, but also we have a similar question about COVID. This caller asking, what does the panel think about COVID affecting native Hawaiians? Kiola, I'm going to start with you on this one, and also, what are some ways that OHA can help native Hawaiians or native Hawaiian programs during this COVID pandemic? Kiola?
Sure. So there's definitely been an impact, both, you know, health-wise and employment-wise. I think OHA's done a good job collecting the data and working with stakeholders on that to understand at this point in time, from that health perspective, using Department of Health statistics, how native Hawaiians have been affected, and working with entities like the Native Hawaiian Chamber of Commerce to understand how native Hawaiians have been affected from a business perspective, along with the unemployment data coming in. This is one of those issues where OHA can't do anything by ourselves. We're going to have to work with stakeholders and utilize our resources in targeted ways to support the overall recovery from COVID. It's going to be a long time, and I think OHA does have the capacity and the expertise to be the supporter, the researcher, the data collector, and to an extent, working with the direct service providers to provide relief for this as Hawaiians and all of Hawaii move forward to recover from this pandemic.
All right, thank you, Kiola. And I want to ask the same question to Lana Kila. Your thoughts on that?
Well, I do agree with what Kiola stated, too. OHA has become a great collector of the data, and we do need to be able to work with other agencies on this. But I would actually also take another step to extend. I think OHA has, sits in a role to be able to call together as well as other agencies, as well as the other native Hawaiian trusts. All of our trusts, they all share the same beneficiaries, and with the combined wealth of all of these trusts and the land assets, we have the ability to really mahalama our people. And of course, as much as OHA can help to lead the charge of taking care of the native Hawaiian population, it helps to free up more resources for the rest of the population, of course, and how we overlap that. But I think we also have a dynamic opportunity to help to encourage a lot of the things that people have been fighting for for a long time, and OHA's ability to support. One of the big issues that we are seeing is, of course, access to food. Well, we are one of the most richest cultures to be able to thrive on these islands, and yet we are starving. We are having difficulty in accessing food. OHA has a kulianna, and I think has the ability to help support the essential businesses, too, to help us not only just turn on the original machine that left a lot of us in the dust in the first place, but also to help to curve and approach to restarting the economy in a better way. I myself am one of the co-authors of the Ainah Loa Economic Futures Initiative, which helps to, in a goal of establishing more of a circular economy that helps to protect our local communities. So I think that'd be a great essential.
All right, all right. Thank you, Lana Kila. And this is kind of a related question. I'll ask you first, Keone, having to do with COVID and the effect of COVID. We're about to reopen tourism in our state here. Do you think that OHA can help to play a role, to better educate tourists about the values of Hawaii?
Absolutely. You know, and the thing is, I think, summing it up from the previous question, Lana Kila and Kiola, one word, collaboration. And it's basically educating not only ourselves, not only the beneficiaries, not only the state of Hawaii, but the, you know, we welcome, you know, people from out of state, tourism. We rely heavily on tourism. We need to concentrate more on being more self-sustainable. OHA can provide more opportunities, you know, to open up the economy by supporting native Hawaiian businesses, by creating more opportunities in those ways, like by keeping the money here locally, instead of investing outside. I know we've got investments in New York and different places. We need to start putting, funding those trust fund monies, you know, to different programs down here and businesses who can stimulate the economy. Thank you, Laura.
All right, thank you so much. And then we're also going to ask that question of Luana, too, about reopening tourism here in the state. Where do you think that OHA plays a role and how they can help better educate tourists in the values of Hawaii?
Well, first of all, I believe that OHA has many programs naturally that it can educate our tourists, our visitors, and so forth. In Uh, our tourists, our visitors and so forth, uh, in, in implementing those programs to help people understand. Uh, what our true culture is about. Um, the programs that, uh, we can, uh, share with those who, who visit. Uh, through our dance, through our song and so forth. Uh, there's always gonna be room for, um, bringing about the education of our, our Hawaiian culture. More to the forefront than ever before, especially with the fact that, you know, you've had, uh, the world's attention on our Mauna. So why not divert the attention as well to the beautiful culture that we have and able to share that with others through song, dance, history and our culture?
All right, thank you, Luana. All right, so then I'm gonna ask this question next to our, our two incumbents, and we'll start with you first, uh, Colette, and then to you, um, Kaylee. As trustees, what programs have you initiated that, uh, you can say have a positive effect on the community? And what do you still want to accomplish?
Under my leadership, we've provided a long-term commitment to the Department of Hawaiian Homes. We've, where we've committed three, three million dollars annually for the next thirty years. I think we're in our twelfth year. That is a good opportunity to provide the support that our sister agency has. So that's another good thing, but to provide for all the needs for our housing, that's gonna take a lot more than just. The sister agencies working together. We really need to depend on the legislature and even at the federal level. For now, how's the funding to continue to support that organization? So there's been many programs that we've worked with. We've increased our capacity to do grant distribution. For our, um, nonprofits that serve native Hawaiians. We have fine tuned the process so that they be able to apply. Um, so that's been a distribution approach, and we've been able to fund. These grant making for not just twelve months, but for twenty-four months that provides them for continuity. And to be able to hit their objectives on a larger scale. So economics continue to be an, an important issue for the whole state of Hawaii. I think Oha stands a lot to work on providing our fiscal reserve to accommodate and then to look at the long-term. Development for Kakakau Makai, um, that we're looking for get revenue base. So pretty much, I was responsible for the governor of the state of Hawaii. I transfer the Kakakau lands to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs.
All right.
They took, uh, a finesse, would work with the legislature, but all of that got transferred under my leadership, so.
I need to move on.
I can take pride in that, so mahalo nui.
Thank you so much. All right, and to you, Kaylee, as far as programs, you've initiated a positive effect on the community and what you still want to accomplish?
Over the last four years, we've had several investigations and audits that have come up with recommendations. That have helped get Oha back on track, especially in terms of its strategic planning in four areas. Housing, jobs, education and healthcare for native Hawaiians. And so I'm very pleased with the direction we're going. We have to understand that Oha is essentially a trust fund. And that the trustees have a primary duty of being watchdogs over that trust fund. And doing three things that I have advocated. Number one, protect the trust. And that trust is protected through audits and through good fiscal policy. That's something we, that's very important. Number two, grow the trust. We have to take many of the lands that we have, such as the Kakakau Makai area. Or the Evi Lea area, and recognize that over the last seven years, we've done very little with it. And it's billions of dollars of potential funds that have been wasted. Instead. We have to develop those properties so that they can actually meet the needs of native Hawaiians. Number one, I said, protect the trust. Number two, grow the trust. And then third. We have to use the trust for the right purposes. I'm very pleased that we have stopped spending on trying to create a race-based nation. And instead, we're putting our monies into the actual real bread and butter needs, especially during this COVID period. Increasing housing is important, and I'll close with this one last thing. We need to take a bigger role in terms of helping Hawaiians to get onto Hawaiian homelands. There are over twenty-seven thousand native Hawaiians who are waiting to get on. They're on the waiting list, and in some years, we don't even build houses. Oha has the capacity to develop the trust fund to a place where we can provide the cash to help. Get Hawaiians onto the Hawaiian homeland.
All right, I need to get to some of the other candidates.
Absolutely.
Thank you, uh, Kaylee. Uh, so this is a question from Carol, and we had a similar question to this, Carol and Connie Ohi. Uh, and we're gonna start with, um, Kiola, you on this one. Uh, this, again, this is for all of our other candidates. Can you list your goals or objectives that you hope to achieve during your term in office? And we had a similar question about specific ideas you would bring to the board. Uh, Kiola?
Uh, see, so I think one very important area for Oha to start moving forward on is, um. Generating revenue for the trust. Um, we, we've heard about Kakakau Makai and other commercial properties. I think Oha needs to aggressively explore other developing industries, um. Alternative energy, you know, every alternative energy project we hear. About not only the benefits it will have to people for reducing our dependence on fossil fuel. But the industry that it will create and the employment and good steady jobs it will provide. I think we need to explore that and how that connects to the native Hawaiian people. And other areas like, um, I mean, all of us know right now how important it is, right? Internet and broadband connectivity. It's the thing that connects us to the world. Um, all of those things come in through submarine cables. We have, um, waterfront property, you know, business district. Um, we need to explore that. And again, I'm not saying I've definitively reached a conclusion on any of these things. But we need to aggressively, as we're moving forward with our commercial property development, as valuable as that is. There's other areas we need to be equally focused on to truly, uh, put the overall goal. Of increasing the money coming in, because the simple equation is the more money that comes into Oha. The more money that goes into programs for our people. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kiola, and also to you, uh, Lana Kila, uh, specific ideas you would bring to the board?
I think that one, one of the most pressing things too, is as we are looking toward these initiatives to try and build trust. Is that there is still a lingering, um, the, the lingering situation at Oha. Um, by the state constitution is supposed to be receiving twenty percent of ceded lands revenue. Now, we know it's not ceded lands. Um, but, um, at this point right now, with this fifteen million dollar cap that kind of sits on Oha, that's barely three point seven percent. So we are already severely getting jipped by the state and has, for as long as that's been the books from the nineteen seventy constitution. Twenty percent of these funds are supposed to be allocated to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. So in that, all these other initiatives where we are looking to now to spend our funds to do developments to try and. And try and bring in, uh, more revenue, when we have. Set into Hawaii State Constitution is residual funds that we're supposed to already be receiving. So I think it's time that we really, really hold and we aggressively, uh, hold the state accountable to abide by that. Um, I think, uh, uh, but a very important thing, I think that, um. I actually very much agree with Kiola on this too, is that we need to start helping to develop our, our Hawaiian communities through Hawaiian perspective. So much of what I hear and see happening is so much of a Western keeping up with the Joneses kind of aspect of how we wanna try and. Build our communities that is not conducive to the native Hawaiian lifestyle. You know, we are trying to build these, these, uh, very, um.
Okay, I do need to get to the other candidates.
What do you call, uh? Oh, uh, so I, I think just to end that thought, I think we need to be able to look now at creating Hawaiian value-based communities. That give us the, the assets and give us access to be able to do things in a Hawaiian way, like growing our own food. Having alternative energies, because that fits in alignment to our values.
All right, thank you, Lana Kila. I said, and to, to you, Luana, is some, some specific ideas you have that you would bring to the board?
For me, it's about, um, ensuring that our Hawaiians who are living on agricultural lot. Um, our lands and so forth are able to purchase, grow and harvest food to feed not just only their family, but also even their community. And, you know, the, the current COVID pandemic, you know, I witnessed firsthand the dependency on imported foods. Uh, and we, we can't allow that to continue, especially if something of, uh, another pandemic were to happen. So we have to focus back on the development of our food shortage, that we never see that again. I wanted to, you know, contribute something to my community, and I was, I was fortunate enough to be able to. To work with the Mulama Meals program, and even though the meals are flown into Molokai to help feed our kupuna and our needy families and so forth. We, we do need to be more reliable on ourselves, especially on our agricultural lots, to be able to grow. Our foods and able to sustain the agricultural, uh, aspect, not just only Molokai, but throughout, um, our Hawaiian islands. I believe maybe we could put some type of comprehensive, uh, uh, policy, uh, that would, uh. Uh, be in place relating to how Oha and D H G L can work together to ensure food security. Uh, because if anything, we don't want to have to go through another pandemic of this nature. So definitely it's gonna be about and working and putting together our agricultural program for our native Hawaiians and all of Hawaii's.
All right, thank you, Luana, and, and to you, Kiony, as well, about ideas that you would bring to the board if elected.
Thanks, Laura. You know, Lana Kila, spot on, we have some unfinished business. The legislature put a cap on the amount of monies that Oha receives from the ceded lands revenues. Um, so it's beginning about twenty percent, uh, I think it's give or take three percent. Uh, we need to, as, as a board, as an organization, we need to go legis, legislature and raise that cap. In the meantime, we need to start creating our own revenue. Thank you, Kiola, for saying that earlier. We need to create our own opportunities. Kakakau Makai, which the, uh, Oha had possession of since two thousand and twelve, need to be developed. If there's groundwork that needs to be done, certain things that cannot be done, we need to look into doing a land swap or something that's more beneficial to our beneficiary. Beneficiaries right now, instead of just sitting on it. I have the support of the construction trades industries. People are ready to come to the table to support us. One of my goals is to create a construction management division within Oha. Right now, Oha is not equipped to move forward in these different plans and ideas. Uh, we, we run hundreds of million dollars in trust fund lands. Mind you, some of them can be built on, but the ones that can. Is developed, is create flex homes, commercial spaces to support native Hawaiian businesses, uh, and help our people thrive. Thank you so much.
All right, thanks, Kiony. All right, let's, let's turn to, to a voting question, and, and Colette, let's, we'll start with you on this one. Uh, you, you know, despite being statewide contest, there was a combi, combi, uh, combined, excuse me. Five hundred and ninety-one thousand blank votes in the primary election for these three races. Many people saying, quote, I'm not Hawaiian, maybe I shouldn't vote, uh, in Oha races. Kathy from, on Facebook, kind of posed, um, a following question. How do the candidates feel? How do you feel, starting with you, Colette, about having non-Hawaiian people vote in the Oha election?
I don't oppose non-Hawaiians voting. I feel that they have a stake in the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, especially if they live here and they pay taxes. Um, the only critical thing I have about that is that the elected officials can include non-Hawaians. And we have to maintain that and protect that those that run as candidates are full-fledged committed native Hawaiians and not non-native Hawaiians. So voting for us in our race is great. I think I welcome all of them. But to run for the Office of Hawaiian Affairs and to serve as a fiduciary, it should be limited to non-native Hawaiians. To only native Hawaiians. Just, just their vote is important, but to lead the organization, you need to have native Hawaiians at the helm.
Again, and Kaylee to you, statewide contest, five hundred ninety-one thousand blank votes in the primary election. Uh, how do you feel about having non-Hawaiian people vote in the Oha election?
Well, with that large number of blank votes, it's obvious that many people, Hawaiian and non-Hawaiian. Don't see the relevance of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. And I would start with that, that the Office of Hawaiian Affairs affects everyone. It certainly affects Hawaiians, but it also affects non-Hawaians. Anyone who lives in this island land. Is touched by the actions of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, so it requires everyone to get involved. But more than that, the Office of Hawaiian Affairs is a state government agency that administers public lands trust revenues. And so taxpayers and citizens have a duty and an o- opportunity. To do good by getting involved and choosing good leaders. The bottom line is this, this is the bottom line question. Are we going to have the best leaders leading the trust fund or not? And that's the question for people who do, want to go to the polls to answer. And when we have better leaders. We have a better Office of Hawaiian Affairs, Hawaiians benefit, and everyone benefits.
All right, thank you. And I actually do want to get to everyone on this, so maybe we'll, um, next go to you, um, Kiola, asking about this as well, um, statewide vote. Uh, thousands and thousands of blank votes, um, do you feel that, um, everyone should be voting in the Oha election?
Yeah, you know, I mean, I think some people may cast their vote in support of issues like public land trust revenue. Which is a critical issue that was touched on earlier, so if folk, folks are voting for trustees based on their position on any given issue, that's important. But I think people also gotta realize that the work Oha does, um, for example. And we recently conducted advocacy, uh, within the Department of Education, where twenty-six percent. Of the enrolled students that are native Hawaiian, roughly. That means roughly seventy-four percent aren't. So the work that we're doing in the D O E to make that situation better. Um, is directly focused on our beneficiaries, but it's benefiting a wide, a wider variety. Of Hawaii's population than just our beneficiaries, and that goes on and on and on. So the value of that will, again, I think is important, whether they're supporting native Hawaiian issues. Or if they realize that the work Oha does truly does, truly does, um, touch on all of Hawaii mom.
All right, thank you. And to you, Lana Kila, as well, uh, about candidates, uh, how you feel about, uh, non-Hawaiian people voting in the Oha election?
I think it's important for us to remember why Oha was created. Oha was created out of the activism of Kanaka Maoli by our kupuna, uh, from out of the nineteen seventies. Out of, in, 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 and out of the recognition of the illegal overthrow of our nation. Uh, Hawaiians today, in Hawaii, we are a minority in our homeland. These, these, the assets that have been deemed to, to come to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. Uh, comes from revenue generated from stolen lands. So this is. It's not just a state entity. Oha was also created as a quasi-state entity. With a level of autonomy to act as a fourth branch of governance in Hawaii. Particularly to take care of the native Hawaiian people, because we were the ones who were wrong with the illegal overthrow of our nation. And so with that, uh, I think it's important that, to recognize that there are many. People in Hawaii today who are more educated and, and understand that, and a great majority of the non-Kanaka I've met. Who greatly support to, I, I, I asked for their support, but because as it stands now, because of the Rice versus Kaitano case. That opened this up, uh, to a statewide voting. And I think as the numbers of empty ballots show, most, a lot of majority of people in Hawaii say. I am not Kanaka, this is your guys' kulianna. Perhaps it is for you. So I think it's something that perhaps at this time, we, we, we ask a lot, we ask the people of Hawaii how they feel, if they should be voting within this or not.
All right, to you, Luana, I want to ask everyone this question really. Um, statewide contest, uh, hundreds of thousands of blank votes in the primary election. Uh, do you feel that, um, everyone should be voting in the Oha election?
Well, I think part of it is, uh, it's about education, educating the voters, uh, so they can understand, uh. Who we are and, and the purpose that we serve for our people, but at the same time that the, like, like everyone had, uh, said and mentioned. In regards to, uh, uh, the fact that, uh, this, the Rice-Kaitano ruling, that it's now open to everyone can vote. A lot of people didn't know that. They thought they had to be from that specific island. I, I, I admit that a lot of people didn't know that they could do that. A lot of it was done out of respect. Well, it's a Hawaiian thing, so we're not gonna get involved and so forth. But they also have to, they, they also have to understand that their vote will help, uh, for, for people like us candidates to be able to, um. To be a part of the board, so that we can express and help our, our constituents with making the, the correct decisions for, uh, for our people. So part of it is, uh, it's sad that you see, uh, hundreds of thousands of votes, uh, blank. Um, but I really believe everyone should be educated on this particular topic and voting for, uh, our Oha races.
All right, and last, Kiony to you.
Yes, Laura, you know, the high number of blank votes seems to be a trend over the years, especially in the Oha race. Um, it's the law, everyone can vote. I encourage you to vote, but be educated on who you're voting for. Is that candidate supporting the goal of Oha, their beneficiaries? You know, and make sure that, you know, a lot of, most people, Hawaiians and non-Hawaians, don't really know what Oha actually does. So I agree with Luana, they need to be educated, and, and do your homework, you know, ballots are dropping next week, so please do your homework on the candidates, and I encourage you all to vote.
All right, thanks, Kiony. And I really wanted to get to this question from one of our viewers, from Joel in Hilo. Very, very eloquent question, I must say, Joel. Um, and maybe we'll, um, Kiola, we'll start with you on this one. Uh, Joel asks, what ideas do the candidates, newcomers, incumbents have? What ideas do you have to mend past injuries? And develop a positive consciousness and mindset that in the end will help the Lahui not harm it or hinder forward progress?
Yeah, you know, I think we live in a very divisive world right now. Um, a lot of that trickles into Hawaii from other places. You know, we're, we're seeing what's happening, you know, especially, you know, in our country. I think the most important thing we can do right now is really encourage that dialogue between. Um, our beneficiaries and the larger community in Hawaii. Encourage respect between people. And whatever the issue is, really create the spaces for folks to come up with ideas. And Oha needs to listen to those. And...
Oh, malfunction. All right, I had a very nice thought there, Kiola. It's giving me a little bit of a laugh. Okay, we're going to move on to Luana. I want to try to see if we can get everybody to answer this question because it was so eloquent from Joel, about ideas to mend past injuries to help not harm or hinder forward progress. Luana?
Well, I believe that, you know, when we go back in history to see the wrongs that were done to the Hawaiian people, it's, we are the, we are the host culture, but we live as if we are not. As if we're just a sideshow that people look at, oh, that's the Hawaiian, and they do this and that. They perform these things and so on, and we get to enjoy their beautiful scenery and so forth. But there's so much more to it than that, obviously. We don't have that opportunity because of so many things that hinder our progress. And being, being able to, I guess, to rectify all of that will help our people and everyone else who comes to visit Hawaii to know and understand that we're extremely special race of Hawaiian people who have done so much in their lives in advancing their, themselves, as well as in the current moment.
All right, thank you. We only have a few minutes left. I want to, everybody, if you can, please keep your answers short. I want to try to get to everyone. Kili'i, your response?
Well, I'm absolutely passionate about advancing the betterment of the Hawaiian people. And that is one of the ways we can do justice. The Office of Hawaiian Affairs exists that to help Hawaiians to have economic advantage and preserve their culture. But I think that as we go forward, we also have to recognize that we must have aloha spirit as well. It's time to stop dividing Hawaiians people and start uniting. And when we do that together, achieving justice and aloha for everyone, we have the right spirit as we look at our keiki who move into the future generations with justice and with aloha.
All right, thank you. And Colette, to you?
The advice of this is within ourselves. If we choose to be a dividing line between good and bad, the bad will come out over the good. So in our efforts, I looked at the controversial projects that we saw over the last year, Kahuku Windmill Project, where the community turned out in disdain over the big windmills. And then we had the issue with Sherwood Flowers about parks and about the park there. And the outcome was a mediation for Sherwood. And it came out to be, Oha must continue to be an advocate for these people. We view the EISs as needed. We have staff that can do that. We have brilliant staff members. I want to acknowledge their role in all that we do to make Oha a better organization.
All right, thank you, Colette. And also, Lani Kila, to you. Ideas to mend past injuries and to move forward, not harm or hinder forward progress.
Spending many, many months upon mauna kea, there was something that kept that massive movement together. And there was this concept of kapu aloha. Many people use this term of aloha spirit and all this kind of, in a very tourist, touristic way, where up there, it was truly grounding. It was truly about aloha'ha'alo face to face and recognizing that we have to share time and space together. And what is the most pono way to do that? What's our most pono exchange? I think in that, that to see the example that rose up from our mountain of how we simply can engage with each other. I myself, walking into, I'm having direct meetings and stuff and being open for dialogue. We can stand our grounds, but we, we speak well, we speak truth. And we work together, even with those with opposing views, because the remedy in the end is to pono. Because we have to set a firm foundation for the future generations to come. So yes, it is a time to mend these things, but we have to face the truths.
Okay, I need to make sure.
And we have to be willing to do that.
Thank you, thank you, Lani Kila. And Kioni, you get the last word on mending these past injuries moving forward. Kioni?
Okay, thank you. We definitely need to restore the voice, which is the organization for our people. Restoring the confidence that our people have in this organization and the trust. We start by doing that, we listen to them, going out into the community. We're definitely faced with opposition on different projects because we're not listening to the community, like I was saying. Go out there, get their, their take on things, their wisdom, their knowledge. They're the ones that live in those communities. And we have to turn to them for advice in moving forward. And I think that's how we kind of mend the, mend the past mistakes and bridge the gap.
All right, I'm so sorry. I'm not sure if I asked you, Colette. We've got about 20 seconds left. I did. I, I, all right, I'm glad I got to everyone on that question. I thought it was a great question by Joel, so thank you very much, Joel. All right, mahalo to all of you for joining us tonight. And we thank our guests, the candidates for running for the Office of Hawaiian Affairs for the Moloka'i resident seat, Colette Machado and Luana Alapa. Hawaii Island, Kiola Lindsay and Lani Kila Magwell. And the at-large seats, Kili'i Akina and Kioni Souza. All right, next week on Insights, a two-parter. We're going to hear from the two candidates in the special election for State Senate District 16, as well as the candidates running for the Honolulue City Council District 3 seat. Please join us then. I'm Laurie Amato for Insights on PBS Hawaii. Ahuiho.